Tell me when we're ready.
Hi, Jan.
Hi, Jan.
Howdy.
Hello.
How's everybody?
All right, how are you?
Everything is live, Mayor. You can start at will.
Okay. Let's see, I know Vice Mayor is in the building, so we'll give her a chance.
Dang it, where is that? I don't want to go over there.
Oh my God. Hi.
Hey, Valerie.
Hi, Valerie. Have we heard anything of Councilman Kenny? Councilman Kenny? Let's give it a minute or two.
Need your keys?
Yes, thank you.
Like, I don't have a car. I know they're not mine. I had to have my mom drive me down.
I had that happen one time. Someone, I laid my keys down, someone grabbed them.
Yeah.
And they went home.
Oh, no.
And I was in a restaurant or something. And it wasn't until they got home.
That they realized that you had them? Oh, no. Oh, I've done that. Where did I go? I went out of state or something. I had the one set of keys to our car. Ooh. Buh-bah. That's all I'm gonna say.
Go ahead and start.
Yeah, I got it. I mean, my agenda disappeared.
I gotta come back.
Unless it changed.
Uh-uh. I just, I mean...
Okay. Call to order. The City of Danellan Special City Council Meeting, March 22, 2021, 4:00 PM. Everyone's welcome. Thank you for coming. Would you please rise for pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. If there is anyone in the audience that would like to give us a brief prayer before we begin, please come on up to the podium and do it if you would like. Thank you, Annette.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Father, thank you for letting us be able to gather together. I pray, Father, as always, that you give everyone in the room good wisdom to make the right decisions and that everyone will travel home safely. For it's in Jesus Christ's precious name I ask and pray this. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Please be seated. Teresa, can we please have roll call?
Bill White.
Present.
Louise Kenny. Valerie Hanchar.
Here.
Jan Covage.
Present.
Anita Williams.
Here.
Staff, Teresa Malmberg, here. Chief Mike McQuague.
Here.
Troy Slattery.
Here.
Jan Smith.
Here.
Julie Donowski.
Yeah.
And legal counsel, Andrew Hand, by Zoom.
I am here.
Proof of publication. The agenda was posted for this meeting on the city's website and City Hall Bulletin Board on Monday, March 15, 2021.
Okay. Just like to make a few comments before we get started. Number one, if you have a cellphone or something that could ring during the meeting, please at this time turn it off. Please be advised that if you want to speak, we'd appreciate it if you would sign up. Those that sign up get to speak first. We will ask at the conclusion if anyone in the audience would like to speak. When you come up to the podium, please state your name, address. Speak loudly and clearly into the microphone in that this is being Zoomed to people who have said to me that the video portion of it is very good, but the audio is very difficult. So anything we can do to speak clearly and into the microphone, including the council, would help. There's plans also to close caption these comments so the deciphering of what is being said is important, that it can be heard. Just like to say a little something to the council that some of the input I've been getting from people that have attended the meetings have suggested to me that they really appreciate the meetings and they appreciate the openness. But our meetings have a tendency to drag on and possibly, as the chair, I've allowed certain items to be discussed to a point where it's kind of beating a dead horse. So a couple of things I'm gonna do as chair is to remind everyone that when you want to speak, you need to be recognized by the chair. And whoever's recognized has the right to continue to speak uninterrupted from another councilman. I would ask, out of the courtesy of the audience and the fellow council members, that when you do have the floor, you try to limit what you have to say to around five minutes. According to the Robert Sules of Order, once you have spoken, you cannot speak a second time until everybody else has had the opportunity to speak. And then, once you have spoke a second time, if the chair decides that discussion has been thorough, the chair can then end discussion and ask to proceed with a vote. If council at that time believes that additional discussion should continue in disagreeance with the chair, by a majority vote, the chair can be overruled and discussion can continue. So that's what we're gonna try to do today. So, council, do you have any comments regarding the published agenda? Yes?
First of all, no, I don't have any comments regarding the agenda, but I think we would be highly admissed. And I ask that everyone that's listening and that is present to please keep Mandy Roberts, our city clerk, and her family in your prayers. Her father has passed away and she had to leave in the middle of the night or yesterday and got up to South Carolina. So I ask that we all please keep her and her family in their prayers. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you very much. This is something that has happened suddenly and unexpectedly. And our thoughts and prayers are certainly with Mandy. It's the kind of situation that we all face eventually in our lives, but when that phone call comes, it's terrible. So let's wish her the best and keep her in our thoughts. All right, at this time, is there any public comment on anything that is not on the agenda? There are four items on the agenda. This is your opportunity. If you would like to speak to something that is not on the agenda, something new, old business, new business, or just something that's on your mind, here's your opportunity to speak. Teresa, do we have anybody signed up?
I have nobody with their hand raised and we have no one on the sign-up sheet for non-agenda items.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to any subject matter that is not on this agenda? Here's your chance. Okay, there is no one that wants to speak to non-agenda items. We go to item number one. Teresa, do you read the resolution?
Acceptable comment at the vote.
At the vote, okay. All right.
At the motion.
So at this time, is there any public comments on resolution number one? This is the resolution that has to do with EMCORs in its whole way. Yes, Dr. Eno?
My bird, Eno, I live at 9220 Southwest 193rd Circle. And I'm getting my mask tied up with my hearing aid. Sorry about that. I brought this to your attention a couple of weeks ago. And since that time, there is a bill, SB 100, that is moving through the Senate. And it contains a provision of reducing the support of the EMCORs and reverting some of the funds back to public use. But there is one clause that's still contained in it, and it's an extension of the Florida Turnpike northward. And so I'm very, very concerned about that. And I think that if, in fact, it is, it would probably come through the El Pata Preserve and all the way up through the Rainbow River recharge area until it connects with the Sun Coast or whatever other highway that, in fact, it's intended to connect to north of where we are. So I don't think that this is, this bill as it stands, according to members of Sierra Club I've talked to, and they don't think that it's a good idea, that that clause is still in there. They don't support it. I don't feel it should be supported on behalf of the Rainbow River. And therefore, I still encourage you folks to approve the resolution as it is because it addresses the full discharge of the EMCORs program in favor of spending the money on items that are necessary, including other road projects that have been neglected because of the diversion of funds into the EMCORs. So I encourage you to do that, to approve it and sign it and get it into my hands, if you will, so that I can produce it to the No Roads to Room group, who are going to produce it to the Senate and the House committees so that perhaps this bill can be either killed or converted to something more favorable. So I encourage you to do that today. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak to item number one? Okay, please note, there is no additional comment. Teresa, I guess at this time you read the resolution.
No, sir, we have to have discussion.
Discussion?
You're gonna make a motion that it be read by title only, but on the resolution, council may comment prior to your motion.
Okay. Council, do you have any comment?
Yeah, just regarding the bill 100, when I read it, it did state that it was not recommended to go, it was for no build, basically. But it was that they were going to, instead of, and they were going to enhance Highway 19 and those types of things. So there was some good parts to it, but still, there's some things that were concerning as well. So, you know, it still needs to be tweaked, in my opinion, the bill. But, you know, Highway 19 definitely does need it. And putting on, like in our rural areas where they can put the different kinds of, you know, when it says there's an accident five miles ahead on your phone when you're following the GPS, that usually gets me lost. Getting those kind of things up and better in the more rural areas, that is one of the things that it implied that it would do. So again, there were some good parts of the bill, but it still needs, you know, it just needs to say no build from what the core task that I was on, so.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else on council make a comment? Jan?
Yes, I would just like to comment that we're joining a huge group of other groups within Marion County in opposing this EMCORs project and its continuation. There's really consensus that the roots are really arbitrary at this time. Real estate brokers here in Marion County are seriously concerned about the devaluation of properties here, particularly if, we have this green belt around our county that is definitely here to stay if it doesn't get disrupted by the interstate and the commercialism that would accompany it. Okay, so there are, one of the groups is called Horse Farms Forever. There's some heavy hitters behind this opposition. And we definitely, I think, should join these groups to show our support. It's not that this bypass will not happen. There's just a better place, perhaps. I'm thinking, like many other people are thinking, further southern parts of Citrus County and take it right on to the I-75 in Sumter County or whatever. But not here, please. Thank you.
Ms. Kenny, have any comment?
Well, I definitely think it needs to be supported.
Pull your mic close to you.
Oh, okay. Anything we can do to slow down that particular legislation, I think it's a good thing. So I concur.
Okay, any additional comment? Okay, Teresa, is now the time you read it?
Now we have to make a motion.
Hmm?
I move that we read the resolution by title only.
We have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So now we go to the proposed motion?
No, she has to read it.
Okay. I was afraid to ask that again.
You got it right that time. Resolution number RES 2021-06, a resolution of the City of Danellan urging the governor and state legislature to cease funding for the multi-use corridors of regional economic significance EMCORs program and supporting legislation to repeal the EMCORs program and revert program funds.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
And just quick discussion. I'd like to see us not just hand this over to just one person. I think we should send this to the EMCORs Task Force. I think that we should send it to the FDOT themselves. And then also, if the Sierra Club is giving a resolution and a packet, that yes, we should give it to them, but just not hand it over to a citizen to give to the Sierra Club. I think we need to make sure that our information is kind of upfront in their face instead of in a big pile of paperwork. So that's just my recommendation. Because we usually just don't hand it off to a third party. So I think we, the city, need to definitely make sure that we are sending it to the appropriate players, so to speak. And then also, we can get it to the Sierra Club or the Friends Forever, whichever one it was.
Any comments to that?
That seems reasonable.
Very reasonable? Yes, I think that's reasonable. We certainly want it to go where it's supposed to go.
Well, no, I'm sure it was going to go, but I just think if it's kind of not in the direction of the city...
Right. Just to remind ourselves, though, I'm with you. I get it and I agree. But once this is passed, if it's passed, it then becomes public record. So once someone, once we approve this, if someone wants a copy of it, they...
Oh, that's, no, no, no. I'm just saying that I would like for us to send it out instead of just being in one big pile.
Okay.
That's all.
Very constructive. Okay. So we've had a motion on the floor?
We had a second?
And a second? We had our discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Good job, we're off to a good start. Okay. Agenda item number two. It is now 4:22 PM. And I closed the special city council meeting and opened the public hearing to discuss. You want to read that, Teresa, or should I?
You may read it.
Okay. Ordinance 2021-01, city clerk duties posted on the city's website on February 24, 2021. Public hearing advertised on the city's website on March 4, 2021, and advertised in the Riverland News on March 11, 2021. Do we have a staff comment?
Sir, if I'm not mistaken, I believe we need to read the public hearing statement into the record.
Okay, I'm going by my notes.
I'll take that.
Okay, right.
Public hearing statement. All persons wishing to address the city council will be asked to limit their comments to the specific subject being addressed. Public opinions and input are valued by the council. However, it is requested that comments are directed at specific issues rather than personal comments directed toward the council members or staff in order to foster mutual respect between council members and the public. Members of the public in attendance at public forums should listen courteously and attentively to all public discussions before the body and focus on the business at hand. They shall refrain from interrupting other speakers, making personal comments not germane to the business of the body or otherwise interfering with the orderly conduct of meetings. Members of the public addressing city council and boards, commissions on a specific project or proposal are requested to disclose any personal interest or relationship and any business, professional or financial interests with any individual group, project, or proposal regarding the subject matter under review. Members of the public should always err on the side of more public disclosure, not less, in order to provide integrity to the public process.
Very good, thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Has anybody signed up, Teresa?
Mayor, I do have emailed comments. I have no one with their hand raised at this time on Zoom.
Okay, let's, before we read, is there anyone in the audience that would like to come up and speak to this? Okay, no comments either way. Teresa, want to read the email, please?
Email received by Mandy Roberts, Monday, March 22, 2021, 3:56 PM. These comments are from kba8781190@aal.com. Dear city clerk, in regards to agenda items two and three, at today's special city council meeting, please read to the council and enter into the record the below statements as my public comment on ordinance 2021-1. To the city council, the proposed ordinance 2021-01 states that the council has ultimate authority to permanently appoint and terminate department heads. As used here, the word ultimate is variously defined as being at the end of a process and final result. The proposed ordinance also includes the sentence, "The city clerk shall be responsible for making recommendations to the city council for permanent department head appointments and terminations." In regards to terminations, this language assigning responsibility to the city clerk for recommendations could be interpreted as the responsibility to initiate terminations, with the council responsible for acting on the recommendations to make the final decisions. Therefore, the ordinance must specifically state that the council may initiate a termination in order to remove any doubt or debate. Thank you, Keith Baxter. I have no further comments from the public, sir.
Very good. At this time, does council have any comment?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Ms. Kenny?
Regarding this particular ordinance, which I largely approve, on lines 69 and 70, it reads, "When necessary for the clerk may authorize..." No, "when necessary for the good of the service, the city clerk may suspend department heads." I think that is in conflict to the intent of this ordinance. In the Riverland News, there is a quote where the mayor is quoted as having said, "I want it to be very clear, cut, and clean, and that the final decision is at the feet of the council," White said. I concur with that. That's my only objection to this ordinance. I would like to move it forward with that decision.
Any other comment? Attorney Hand, are you with us?
Yes, sir, right here.
This clarification that was brought out by Mr. Baxter and another point by Councilman Kenny, can you speak that if the language as it's currently written, does it cover all the things that we've intended it to do? And are these concerns that we should be concerned about?
Sure, I'll be happy to speak to that, Mayor. I'll address Councilman Kenny's comments first. The comment there on suspension of department heads, that's something that was specifically discussed at the last meeting. That language, it's council's pleasure, can certainly be deleted. But at the last meeting, there was some discussion on whether or not, in the event that you have a situation, you know, whatever possibly could go wrong with a department head in between city council meetings, that there should be the ability of the city clerk to temporarily suspend department heads. Of course, that would be reviewed by city council. So that can come out or it can stay in. But if it's removed, then there would have to be a special cabinet meeting or a special city council meeting to suspend a department head. And, you know, and if there's something egregious or something going on, the city clerk wouldn't have that authority. So really, the best that could happen there would be to call a special council meeting in that event. So that's up to council in that option. As far as the comments received regarding city council authority, this ordinance addresses the city clerk's responsibilities. So really, the ordinance should be tailored. It speaks to city council because you do have a new, it does have a new process coming up here for clarity, and so it does reference city council and city council's powers. But the ordinance, even though it no longer states that in the previous version, it stated the city clerk has the authority to initiate the decision-making process, that has been removed. And so there is no provision here that requires the city clerk to begin any type of decision-making process for the termination of a department head. So that clearly rests with council.
May I ask a question?
Sure, please.
In the previous sentence, Mr. Hand, it says, "The city clerk shall have the authority to temporarily fill a department head vacancy for a period not to exceed 90 days." So she does have that latitude and we were happy to give that latitude. It is the next sentence that concerns me, that when it's necessary for the good of the service, the city clerk may suspend a department head. And in the past, we have even included the language indefinitely suspend. And the difference between indefinitely suspending and firing, to me, is one and the same. That is the reason that I was particularly concerned about that language. That is the reason that I was particularly concerned about that language.
Okay. Well, suspension from an employment law standpoint is different. It's not a dismissal. If you want to limit it in, you know, like I said, the way that I see it, of course, all ultimate authority lies with the city council regarding any termination or appointment. The ordinance also makes that very clear. Accordingly, any kind of suspension would, in a sense, be temporary until, you know, such things council could meet and then decide what to do about it. If you would like to see it be more specific, we could modify it. But certainly, there's no contemplation of a permanent firing, any type of situation like that from that language. It's just simply to allow the city clerk to place someone on suspension for misconduct until that could be done with by city council.
I guess another comment that I would make is the more simple the language is in an ordinance, the easier it is to understand and for code enforcement. And I do concur that some of our ordinances are very complex when we read them and could be an issue of debate. And when the mayor says, "I want it to be very clean, very cut and clean, and that the final decision is at the feet of the council," I think that he gets that if that sentence is eliminated. And I will rest with that comment.
Anyone else want to speak for a time being? Yes.
I just want to add that that was added in at the request of the city clerk. If, for example, a theft is occurring, that she has the ability to suspend that employee immediately until it can come before council. You wouldn't want to keep a city employee on premises if a theft is occurring. That's just a hypothetical, that's just an example I'm providing.
But the previous sentence doesn't allow her to do that.
Okay.
She has 90 days of suspension she can give to anybody at any time. It says, "When necessary," let's see, "the city administrator clerk may authorize the head of the department or office to appoint, suspend, or remove for a period not to exceed 90 days." So, she would have 90 days in which she could immediately do something like that.
So, Ms. Kenny, what's, what specifically is in the wordage? I'm trying to grasp specifically in the wordage. What is it that's troubling you?
What troubles me is that the city clerk may authorize the head of the department or office to appoint, suspend, or remove subordinates in such department or office. That seems pretty definitive. And I think that's contrary to the intent of the ordinance. She can do something in an emergency situation for 90 days.
You're talking about the subordinates?
No, not subordinates. It is line 70.
Okay.
And all it reads, and it's just a statement, let's see, "When necessary for the clerk may," let's see, "when necessary for the good of service, the city clerk may suspend department heads," period. That is the sentence.
That doesn't give her 90 days, though.
Above the line, above does. The line number 68 says, "The city clerk shall have the authority to temporarily fill a department head vacancy for a period not to exceed 90 days."
May I clarify that, please?
Yes, Teresa.
That is to fulfill a position. If a department head leaves, she has a 90-day authority to fill that vacancy. On an, it's the old emergency hire. That doesn't give her the latitude to terminate an employee who has made an egregious personnel matter.
Violation.
Violation. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, the reason for "when necessary for the good of service" is exactly that. On one hand, she can hire to fill a vacancy on an emergency basis until it can come before council or be advertised, whatever that may be. That's the first sentence. The sentence that you're concerned about, "when necessary for the good of service," there's nowhere else in this section that gives her the authority to fire someone who has, like she said, stolen or any other violation that's egregious. If you don't leave that in there, if somebody does commit a serious violation, her hands are tied until she can call a special counsel and put you all together and many, many other things that are required by employment or labor law.
Well, I know I've been to a lot of meetings, and you can take one simple sentence, and it can be debated for a very long time. And if we don't need it, I think the rest of the ordinance is clear. But I see your point.
Okay.
But my point is, our ordinances are becoming more and more technical and more and more like we're in a big city. And we're not part of Orange County. We are part of Dunella. We're a small county. And I don't think that that kind of language and that specificity is necessarily healthy. But I will rest my case.
Can I give an example?
Please, Jan.
I have access to the city bank accounts. If I was somehow stealing funds and could keep it hidden for a period of time, but it was discovered and I got caught, would you want me to stay seated at my desk doing my everyday duties?
You could be suspended.
Or would you want Mandy to suspend me immediately?
For 90 days, yes. She would get to do that.
But by removing that sentence, it sounds like she wouldn't have that authority. She'd have to get every one of you all on the phone.
No, give me a public meeting.
Well, no, to call a public meeting.
Okay.
And meanwhile, I'm still sitting at my desk. That's my concern if this sentence is removed. Not that I'm stealing. I didn't know what other example to give.
I can see it debated either way, is my point. I just think that kind of technical language is nonsensical in this ordinance. But I rest my case. I'm going to vote for it regardless.
Okay. Andrew, if I can just say something, trying to clear this up. I think what council would feel good about is giving the city clerk the emergency powers to either hire or terminate someone within a specific timeframe, for instance. If we need someone and there, we need someone right now, we need to get someone in, the city clerk has the ability to hire someone for up to 90 days until council deals with it. If, as Jan has said, Jan Smith has said, if someone is doing something within the city that needs to be taken care of immediately, she has the power to suspend that person for a period of time until council has the time to deal with it. If that's the way it's worded, I think that's exactly the way we wanted it to be.
Well, I'm going to vote for the ordinance. I just think it's a little bit more complicated. I think you've got that in the ordinance in the previous sentence, regardless.
So, the whole idea is to give the city clerk the ability to take care of business when something needs, when there's a fire in the building?
Right. What we don't want, and we've had in other ordinances, indefinite suspensions. And we've used that term.
And addressing Mr. Baxter's point, I think it's very clear what council, the majority of council has voted, is to have the final decision to hire or terminate someone after all the processes have been followed by law. The final decision is with the council. Now, his point seems to be, who initiates the process, especially the termination? Who initiates it? Is it council that can initiate it? Or is it the city clerk that can initiate it? I think, the way I've understood it, it can be either way. The initiation process can happen. If the city clerk, who is responsible for the oversight of the department heads, sees something as a supervisor, part of her duties, that is not being done well, she should have the empowerment to initiate the process. To give balance to that, to prevent kind of a buddy-buddy kind of thing where someone needs to be terminated or considered terminated, but they're not because there's a friendship or whatever, there's a balance to that where council can initiate on its own the process to look at somebody who needs to be terminated. So, I think what Mr. Baxter's point is, he feels the way that language is written, that council can't initiate it on its own, that it must be initiated through the city clerk. And I have talked with Andrew this afternoon, and he disagrees with that interpretation. He says that, no, it allows the process to start from either side of the equation. So, as long as that language means that if the city clerk has an issue, the city clerk can start the process. And as long as council has an issue, they can start the process. As long as it's legal through all the processes, then we're good. But we absolutely do not want to have a situation where city council is handcuffed to act until the city clerk decides to initiate. So, that was Mr. Baxter's concern. And Mr. Hand has looked at that and has guaranteed me that, no, that isn't a concern, that it can happen either way. And if that's the case, I'm 100% with that concept. Okay. Any other comments?
Well, I still believe that really and truly hiring and firing, especially in this day and age, needs to be handled by professionals who are trained in human resource. There are so many issues that, I mean, A, we have no procedures and process in place for this. There's, there's not, there's, you know, as a council, you're saying that we can initiate the firing of a department head. On what grounds can we fire them? What grounds can I, Valerie, come up to this council and say, "I think Moses, who's in charge of the water department," which we no longer own, so I'm not picking on any current staff, thank you, "he has not made my flow of water straight. I am ticked off. I want him fired." And I can, and I can binge Elzeer to, I mean, how does, how does the staff come back to you and go, "But wait a minute. I didn't do that. Valerie's water flow was 1,300 pressure PSIs, just like everybody else's." Now, I have staff having to defend themselves because a council member has decided to bring up an issue. And no offense, ladies and gentlemen, I have seen this in this city where department head managers, whatever their process was, have been, I guess back in that day, we didn't use the word, but bullied, into either leaving or being fired. And it was simply because they did not always do what council members thought they should be doing. It wasn't because they weren't doing their profession. Now, some of them, yes. They, we had documentation. That's it. When you go, because how am I going to go to Moses? Because usually, there's a procedure, and that's an issue that we have here, too, by the way. We're not following our procedure. Because when you're a department head, you have to go to Joseph, Moses's aide, and say, "Joseph, you weren't doing this. Here's a warning." Joseph, you did it wrong again. It's now in writing. Joseph, it's your third one. Now, you're up. Where is that protection for our department heads? Where do they have that protection to get a warning that, hey, we're not happy? Because you and I shouldn't be able to go talk to Moses on our own. It has to be as a group combined. So, how are we protecting our employees? Their legal rights, their rights to work? Their rights to have a fair and just review? I can fire you, but I'm not giving you your review. And I don't know all the processes of hiring a water person that needs a license C. Now, I understand that Mandy will look over the applications, I guess? Or do we just have to look at all of them and decide? We have to interview all 20? It's just, there's not a process? There's not a human resource person on this panel? So, I don't understand how we, as a city council, can do this. I just.
Okay. These are similar arguments that you've stated.
I will give every argument, sir, every time.
All right. You've had your time. Jan?
Yes. I'd just like to say that Councilwoman Hancher is fairly irrelevant because this is a council process. No one person can start a plan to judge or make a judgment about a person's dismissal because of inappropriate behavior. The whole idea, it's a council decision. And we don't need to hire a human resources expert or confer with one because I'm sure it's going to be an egregious act that's going to bring something up here before this council. I think this discussion is over, and it should be ended. And let's vote.
Well, Mandy Roberts is our human resource.
I haven't, I haven't given you the floor. Anybody on this side like to make a final comment?
Well, I think.
Yes. She hasn't spoke yet, but.
Yes.
Go ahead, Anita.
Mayor White, I'm not going to say anything different than I've already said. We have a certified municipal clerk in the city of Dunella. Whether she lives in this county or not, she has the knowledge. She has the training. She's here day by day, in and out, and is aware of the department head's duties, I'm sure. If she's not aware of all of them, then she's aware of most of them. And I think that it should be her responsibility. I worked for the state of Florida. I worked my way up to management. And like the school board, I had to prepare packages, hiring packages, and I sent them to the state of Florida to approve. But I knew the day in and day out responsibilities of the entire, all of the positions in the office that I managed. I think it should rest with the clerk, not the city council.
Ms. Kenny?
I think any kind of decision that is regarding the issues that we just were talking about in terms of what is just and what is not just, it's more just if you have a decision made by a council where you have to have a majority vote than by a single person. And I think that if I were in Mandy's position, I would very much, if I had a problem, like to refer it to the council so that I would not have to have the ultimate decision. I think it protects her.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think everybody up there had some very valid comments. I would call to the attention that the HR department, while it is under the auspices of the city clerk, whatever procedure you vote on through this resolution and you pass it, it's going to be managed under the existing personnel manual. There may be changes that need to be tweaked. None of our hirerees are subject to one interviewer. They are subject to a panel of three. No one person is responsible for hiring or firing. It is done in a true management setting where there's input from the department head about a lower echelon employee. If it's a department head, there's still a review, other than the things we've talked about today. The HR department, as it sits now, is going to look for, once they have their marching orders, where they might need to be, make changes in the personnel manual. And then, that's going to be redrafted, if necessary, and have oversight of the attorney and whoever else. The way it's all going to wrap up with the city clerk's position as the ordinance states, and coming to council with recommendations for interviewing. and coming to council with recommendations for interviewing, you're going to call the, the department heads, you're going to interview them, and make a recommendation from, from a, just like if it was that three panels sitting in the conference room, interviewing a lower echelon person. These are all things that you're talking about that can be controlled and protected through the personnel manual and the staff that you have leading it in the background.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. I haven't made any comment, I'm just going to make just a couple real quick, because it's time. This isn't about a person. This isn't about if a certain person is good and solid and has great judgment. This is defining a position that will remain when any person has gone. So when, when it's framed in a personal way, that so-and-so really knows everything and has a historical reference, and we can count on that person, yeah, I, I, I agree. But what we're defining is a position that's going to remain when that person is gone. And the next person who gets in there may not have all the attributes that currently is in that chair. So ultimately, what this simply is, is the council, when it comes to department heads, not the rank-and-file employees, the department heads. And there's not that many department heads, but they're very important. The police department is being removed from this, whether it's Public Works, whether it's Finance, whether it's, what are some of the other? Community Development. Just a few key people that make the difference, the major differences in the city. It just comes to, once that entire process has gone down, reason for determination, warnings, how to rectify the behavior, discussions with that person. When all these things have been done, and the recommendation or the feeling is that this person isn't responding, then ultimately, that decision to replace or to hire a department head, the final decision, comes to council. This isn't about breaking the law, or doing something that's going to be challenged in court, because you haven't given someone due process. Even if the city administrator was going to terminate someone, that person is responsible, is entitled to certain due processes. So those same due processes that would be attached to a city administrator, a single person making that call, those same processes are attached to what the city council would have to have done before they could pull the trigger. And that would be something that the city clerk would be making sure, because the city clerk is in charge of the department heads, police are out of it, so the city clerk would be trying to rectify that. So all, all this, all this really is, is making the, after all the processes are done, is giving the council the authority to, to make the final call. It is now 4:55 PM, and I close the public hearing, held to discuss ordinance 2021-01, and reopen the March 22 special city council meeting. We are now moving on to item number three. Okay. Except public comments?
No additional comments.
No additional comments? So do we have a motion to, to approve ordinance?
Read by title only?
By title only? Yeah, by title only. 2021-01, read by title, title only. Do we have a motion?
I move. I so move.
Got a second by Ms. Covage? Any, there's no discussion at this point? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
3-2. Please take note, the names of, so everybody knows how everybody voted. Proposed motion?
I'll read by title only.
Okay, please.
Ordinance number ORD 2021-01, an ordinance of the city of Donellen, Florida, amending Chapter 2, Administration, Article 3, Officers and Employees, Division 2, City Manager and Creating, Division 3, Finance Officer, of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Donellen, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date.
Do we have a motion to accept ordinance 2020-1, 2020-01? Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I make a motion that we accept ordinance-
You got a second?
I have a second. I'm sorry.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion at this point? Okay, I call it for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Passes 3-2. Please make note of the names and how they voted. Okay, very good. We go to item number four, Nine Island Cove. We accept public comment. Teresa, has anybody signed up for public comments on Nine Island Cove?
Let me get the public here, sign them sheet, mayor. I have no one signed up, and there's no one on Zoom.
Very good. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to item number four? Okay, no comment. Okay, do we have a motion by council to approve item number four?
So moved. I move to approve the Nine Island Cove, Florida, for every list application, and authorize the mayor to sign the management prospectus and letter of endorsement supporting the application. I further move that the council authorize Rainbow River Conservation Group to submit the same to the state of Florida for consideration.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Please note that Ms. Covage seconds. Okay, discussion. Any discussion by council on item number four?
Question. Do we not still think that our staff should not have a chance to dance to the music their phone plays? No. Not have a chance to review this and give us comments, considering it is stating that there is no extra personnel needed, no finance needed, or anything like that? I did give that to the staff last time, because it was done in 2019, they did do some comments. I just think that, as a city, just not having our professionals give us, a council, any input into what is being proposed is just a little irresponsible on our part, just-
I would like to comment-
Wait, wait, she still, she still has the floor.
Thank you, darling. So, I mean, is that just not something we don't want to do? We just want to, and I still haven't seen where the, the owners of the property have actually given consent, not just been texted, or sent a letter, or said that they did it, but actually given consent for this to be done, which I was told by the state of Florida that had to be done. I, I just think, I just want us to put our, cross our Ts and dot our Is before we obligate our staff and our funds and our citizens, the 1,800 that live here.
Okay. Any other comment? Yeah? You don't have to comment if you don't want to.
I would just like to comment that we have, did have a workshop on this, that it is, let's put it this way, until the Florida Forever panel goes to the broker, and again, I think Ms. Councilwoman Hancher does not understand that a broker is representing these owners, okay? That is a fact, okay? Because RRC and Dr. Bernardino have, and other persons have been communicating with these people for a long time. They are still on board to have this certain broker, real estate firm, represent them. So first of all, we are a long ways from being, let's put it this way, making a presentation that will even be accepted by Florida Forever, then the DEP appraisers comes. So at that time, we would make decisions through council as to what would be done with that property. Right now, there's, there's, I see no need for discussion as to how it would be managed, and how that financing would be managed, other than, once we get the Florida Forever listing, we go on a fast and furious hunt to get grants and contributions by people I know within this community, some of them sitting here already, want to write checks to help get these actions in line. And we're a long ways from that. So when the time comes, yeah, we'll have more discussion about management and city administration input. Thank you.
Anyone on this side? Deas? Ms. Williams?
I concur with Councilwoman Covage. This is the beginning of a process. This is a process that's being taken on, at the, on behalf of the Rainbow River Conservation, and we are supporting that, and I definitely feel like we've had discussions.
Anyone else? Okay, just a couple comments that I have. Wasn't that long ago, just a little over a year ago, that this was brought up at the council. It was a special workshop for it. All the things that needed to be discussed at that time were discussed. We had 36 people come to the podium and speak. 31 spoke in favor, five spoke opposed. This recently has been beaten to death. All the things that applied 12 months ago, apply right now. It's, it's all there. If you want to read it, it's, it's all, it's all there. Actually, this issue was brought to a council for a vote, and it didn't. After all this, it didn't pass on a 2-2 tie. So council came very close to passing this before. So the information's out there. I, I reject the idea that this has not been vetted, and the information, it's, it was out there to the point that if I heard any more about it, my brain was going to explode. So anyway, I'd like to ask if there's a motion to approve item number four?
I so move.
We have a motion on the floor, mayor, from Louise Kenny, to approve. And the motion was read, and Councilwoman Covage seconded the motion, and you went into discussion.
Okay, so, okay, okay, thank you very good, very much. Okay, come for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Please make note how the individual council members voted for austerity.
Yes, sir.
One thing I would ask, Teresa, going back to, before I forget, the EMCOR resolution that was passed, it is very time-sensitive, in that the legislature is currently meeting right now, and they're actually in their final couple weeks. So the faster we can get that done, I'm ready to sign it.
Yes, sir.
And I'll sign it tonight, and we'll be good to go. Being somewhat involved with the legislature in various aspects a few years ago, I know it's the last two or three weeks of the legislature, when everything starts to really happen. So right now, they are in their final two or three weeks, so all, all these things are now coming to votes. They all know they have deadlines, they all want to go home, they've been doing this since January, they're tired of it, sick of it, really, and they, they actually start voting machine-gun style from this point forward, so we need to get that up there. Okay, so we are concluded with number four. And when I sign that, as Vice Mayor suggested, the faster we can find who to send these, send that copy to, the better. Right? All right, thank you. Okay, actually, item number five was really the main, one of the main reasons we were going to have this, we were going to have this special meeting. Troy has put hours of work into analyzing our roads. We all know that the roads in the city have not been tended to adequately over a 10-year period of time, for various reasons. I think the economics of the city prevented much attention to it. So Troy has the, the challenge, with a limited amount of money, to now to diligently start to look at our road project, and he has asked, he asked to have a special meeting just for it, because he said it would take about four hours, right?
I'll keep it at three hours.
Okay, Troy, the floor is yours.
I'll be across the way, just kind of when it's-
Mr. Mayor, if it's all right, I want to move up to the podium there, where I am not spinning my head around like a screwdriver, and try to keep as brief as possible. Thank you, council. Thank you, citizens, for all being here tonight. Many of you know or remember that back August of 2020, I made this exact same presentation. I requested to have this on the, as a special workshop, just to represent, re-show the information, to get everybody on board, what we're facing and our challenges with reconditioning the roads here in the city. As the mayor said, it has been many years that we have not had a master road plan to work off of, so. Teresa, you go ahead. Other than an annual budget, the city has not published a master road plan for road improvements or road restorations. Through the last year or so, we found some historical information that was in our files, showing a existing inventory of our roads, and a conditions report that was in, about the roads. But it is somewhat outdated. The information that we found, we'll show examples of it here in a little bit, have no dates on the documents. And by my knowledge and reading through them, I'd say they're at least 10 years old. Our goal is to establish a professional master plan, that would include updates, updating the road inventory, and engineers' prepared road assessments. This is vital, because as we go out and around the city, if I go out and I look, I know what a bad road is. I can pretty much tell you that, and every one of us can. But it's, what the road base is, it's, there's more to it than just looking at the surface to see the integrity of these roads. So we certainly want to look into getting the engineers on board, to helping us provide road assessments, along with a priority list of the road improvements, with identified funding options of current and future city council to use in the long term. That's the most important part that I want to talk about tonight, is the fact that we may have a little bit of money today, or-
may have a little bit of money today, or next week, or next year, to resurface some of the most important roads in the city. But eventually, what money we have will run out, and in order for this program to be successful, it has to be sustainable. So, we'll talk about some opportunity for sustainable funding. Capital improvement revenues was decreased by the Marion County, by Marion County approximately 75.3% after renewal of an inter-local agreement. Total revenues now is an estimate approximately $48,000 a year. That's, if I did quick math on that, I'd say we went from $390,000 to $48,000. Go ahead. Our discussion topics is going to be the description of our roads within the city, estimated costs, or funding options, roads and street conditions report, the priority and primary factors, and secondary factors. Go ahead. An estimated 19.5 miles of city-owned roads, 15 miles of paved, and 4.5 miles of unpaved. Unpaved, unimproved is Donellen Heights, short section of Third Avenue, a portion of Palm Street, Elm Street, which is also lacking of proper right-of-way for improvement in the future. Go ahead, the next one. This up here that you see is Donellen Heights, okay? And to give you a point of reference, this is San Jose Boulevard, wastewater treatment plant, St. Patrick Road going to the ball field. That's 4.5 miles of roadway in that subdivision that is unpaved, and has been talked about for as long as I've been employed here in the city, for an estimated 23 years, okay? I'm not sure of the true numbers of it, but I do believe there's at least five or six homes that have just recently been built in the last couple of months, and a few more homes that are being developed right now.
We're up to about 14 in Donellen Heights now.
Perfect, thank you. 14 in less than a year. The area is booming, all right? So, I personally want to focus on Donellen Heights as we move throughout the year, but at the same time, not neglecting our other roads. Next picture, please. This here is showing the Second and Third Avenue. The Third Avenue, right here, also extends to this area over here, this is the unpaved section. By guess, I'd say a little over 300, 400 feet of roadway there. There's Elm Street is right in this area here. This says Elm is right here, but that's not, that's actually Orlando. Elm Street is a private, it looks like a private dirt road back here, but it is a city-owned road. Next picture. There's also roads located on private property and properties that are not owned or maintained by the city. We've got the two mobile home parks open, Donellen Square, we've got Burkett Road in South Burkett, that's in the backside of Blue Cove, Rainbow Garden Circle, Indian Cove, and Nine Island Cove. Next. The estimated cost, we had, I had worked closely with our engineer, and looked at other projects around the area, and compared our CDBG project downtown when coming up with these estimates, and according to high estimates now, I'm not one for keeping it as low as possible to make you buy into something, these are high estimates. To do the 15 miles of roadway resurfacing is a little over $7 million. The estimated cost for upgrading from dirt roads to paved roads is an estimated $900,000 plus or minus, based on the design and requirements. So, for the 4.5 miles of the unpaved roads in the city, we're looking at roughly 4.5, well, $4,050,000. Now, I just found out, by the way, I don't mean to be rude, I do have a guest with us here this evening, it's Alan Gary with Kimley Horn, he's our engineer, working on all the roads with me throughout the city. But we have recently found out that the cost of material and labor is starting to go up through the roof. So, these estimates, although, may have been a little high last year, they may be right at a zero balance this year, or a little low. So, these are just rough ideas, to get our minds wrapped around the severity and the estimated cost. The estimated cost provided will fluctuate depending on the needs of each road, such as your storm waters, your swales, your curbs, and road evaluations. Good example is Donellen Heights is actually a higher piece of land in some parts of the city, it may only require a few DRAs, and maybe some swales along the roadway to disperse to the storm waters, whereas in our historic district, or Blue Cove, or Vought Springs, may require some alternative filtration or underground pipe systems to go with it. Okay, getting into our funding options, 5th cent gas tax for our capital reserves, and I'll ask Jan, I think we have the document attached as well, we'll look at it, but these numbers are close, have been adjusted to our most recent numbers. So, do we have that document? There we go. Can we expand that? Thank you, thank you. All right, so, as you see, our 5th cent capital reserves.
Troy, if you'd like me to speak to this?
Please.
Okay. These balances are estimated at the end of this, for the end of this fiscal year, based on what's in this year's budget. So, Troy has budgeted to use of the 5th, now, line number one, the 5th cent gas tax reserve for use, he has about over $588,000 budgeted just for roads out of this reserve. The estimated balance at the end of the year, if the projects were completed, will only leave $70,000 in that reserve. Line number two, there is another reserve called gas tax capital replacement, which has $69,000. There's another gas tax reserve that will have, that has $12,600 in it. Then we have some other reserves, which are not strictly for roads and streets. Line number five, titled designated capital replacement, $70,814. And if you notice the asterisks, this reserve is for any general fund capital item, if we need computers replaced, if we need a server, so this is for multiple uses, and has typically not gone for anything roads and streets related. There is also a general fund capital infrastructure equity, this is a reserve, a new reserve that council implemented at budget time. We've got $1.8 million. Again, that's for any general fund capital item, could be used for roads and streets, could be used for any other purpose, such as Nine Island Cove. There's also the 1 cent discretionary sales cert tax that was re-adopted for another four years, and we've used quite a bit of it already, and it's estimated that at the end of this fiscal year, there'll be about $300,000. So, in total, if we were to spend all of this on roads, there's about $2.3 million. So, as you can see, there really isn't all that much cash on hand that the city has to spend on roads.
Jan, the number that I hear often is the money that's really at hand, that's not either committed or needed for the piggy bank, is around a half million dollars. Is that an accurate statement, that we have around a half million dollars that, that we could use without squeezing various other accounts for roads?
Well, there's a half million in the budget.
Okay.
That absolutely, Troy has earmarked.
Okay.
For roads this year.
So, that's, we know that's the bottom line?
Yes.
Okay.
Plus, any other monies we may get in this year, you know, council could designate it for roads. But at this point in time, this is what we anticipate to have on the end.
One other question, one of the things I run into is, often I'll come up with an idea, or another council person will come up with an idea about using some funds to fix up or improve things, and often, I'm told, or I hear the response, well, you can't use it that way, you can't use it to fix things, it's only for new things.
Correct. There's a difference between repair and maintenance and new capital.
So, in Troy's presentation, there's a big difference between repaving a paved road and putting in a new pavement on a...
No, not necessarily, because repaving a paved road, if it's going to make that, extend the life of that road, it can be considered a capital project.
Okay.
So, it just depends on the project itself, but if you're talking about a pothole, that's repair and maintenance. These funds cannot be used, as it stands right now, for that type of project.
And Jan, thank you, because I think the public appreciates that, that some of this money cannot be used to fill potholes, right?
That's correct.
And I don't think that's a well-understood fact.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jan. And I was going to touch more on that as well, because that's one of my biggest frustrations. If I could just use any money for anything out there, there'd be a lot more repairs going on, and so forth. But, so, let's skip past the next couple of slides, we're just, skip right on down until you see a photo with the old town of Donellen Ledger in it. All right, now, go back up one. Those last couple of slides talked about all kinds of different funding options, and if you can go back one slide from that, Teresa. Basically, what I want to focus on is the opportunity or the ability for grants, whether we do a special assessment, whether we do some type of MSTU, or just rely on what little bit of gas tax we get every year. In those cases, I don't feel it's going to be a sustainable, long-term project. Even if we went with an MSTU for maintaining roads, and using whatever residual we get in from that to repave roads, that is going to be an extremely long-term process. We could be looking at 25, 30 years, and then have to start from scratch, going right back to repaving roads again. The third, a third, and a third, let's forget that ever came out, okay? Because we already have vetted that over a year ago, and we've, personally, most of you have already vetted it as well, where that is, in my opinion, one of the most unfair ways to paving roads. Simply because our little town services thousands, hundreds of thousands of commuters a year, that are tearing up roads, and should not be relied solely on somebody who owns a single piece of property, all right? So, our funding options, we will be focusing on grants throughout the year. I think next month's council meeting, Chief McQuig and Alan will be talking about grant opportunities, okay? If you will, go ahead, there you go. This is just a photo of an old antique book that we found in our records, dated back, I want to say, to 1927, when they actually did assessments for roads and sidewalks. So, if you look at that, I think somebody was paying $180, or actually, $1.80, somebody paid $89, so fairly cheap back then, but I thought that'd be a nice historical addition, okay? Now, as far as special assessments and stuff like that, the MSTU possibility is not off the table. I would encourage the council to continue to move forward, look into an MSTU for a citywide road fund, or road restoration, repair funding. Where I live out in the county, we pay an MSTU for our specific neighborhood, it costs me about $89 a year over the next however many years. That money gets used for repaving roads, for paving new roads, or simply doing maintenance during that process. And that, to me, is a balanced way of taxing property owners, but with grants and other funding sources, doesn't put the full responsibility on them, okay? The next slide, please. That's just a slide that says, here in the state of Florida, we have the option of special funds, or special taxation for, whether it's a third, a third, and a third, or MSTU-type stuff. All right, let's go to the next slide. This here is a road condition report. We located these in our city records and provided over the next three slides. You'll see a couple of screenshots of what the road condition reports look like, so if we'll go to the next, there you go. Can you blow that up where they can maybe see the first three lines where it's actually a little legible? So, basically, it has the road, it has the grading scales, it gives us the dimensions of the road, whether it's, you know, how long it is, how wide it is, the overall scoring, and then, of course, highlighted in red, yellow, or green is whether it is fair, good, or poor condition. Knowing that this report dates back at least five years, if not 10 years, every road that we talk about is still, on this report, if it's marked "poor," it's still in poor condition. Now, there was a few short roads, few small sections, that have been done since this report. Walnut Street, for one, we just did with the CDBG, and a good portion of Park. So, I will be taking this report and trying to do a modern update with it, all right? There's another similar report to that, I don't know if we have a picture of it included, that was a translation of this, but helped with the inventory and trying to prioritize what roads needed to be done. And then, I actually have a document down here, because at first, we weren't sure if these reports were generated by employees, or if it was actually done by engineers. But here, it says, "The engineer's opinion of probable costs for the City of Donellen capital improvement projects." No date, and no name of the engineering firm, however, the same information that's on this report is reflected in the reports you see above. All right? Go ahead. You can go past the next couple there. Okay. The primary factors when determining road improvement... I had to wait till she quit moving it there. Factors when determining the road improvement priority list is the integrity for safe travel, adequate drainage and storm water management, accessibility to today's type vehicles, and which we all know that many of today's service trucks have increased in size and weight. Examples would be the utility providers, sanitation services, emergency services, and even the general contractor vehicles and trailers, all right? So, now we've got some photos of our roads and streets. That was a set of power lines above a road. This here just starts off, this is the Granada and River View there, that goes in behind the Bingo Hall, to the left of that photo is going to be the Granada Plaza. That right there is what you're seeing of the Granada, and every time it rains, it holds water right there. You could get a quarter-inch drizzle rain, and it's going to hold water there for about two days at least, all right? Go on through, just another identifier. Keep going. Opposite direction, the same road, but you see the size of these potholes, and that could develop within a week, once it begins to open up. Go ahead, go ahead. This is River View heading behind the Bingo Hall, where we have the kayak and canoe rentals and stuff like that. One more photo. That road right there is only about 14 feet wide, and we're seeing every day commercial vehicles and private citizens trying to travel down that road side by side. It is probably 10% worse than what it is in that photo, that photo was taken a year ago, okay? Just more examples of that, just keep on clicking through, I'll tell you when to stop. All right, Cedar and River Drive. This is down by our art gallery, ladies and gentlemen, this is at River Drive and Cedar. You can see how the road service is starting to unravel right at the intersection. Go ahead. And the top of the photo, top right of the photo is where the art gallery sits, this is the entrance, to the left of that is the entrance to the hotels that's down there, and... to the hotels that's down there. And all of this is still crumbling apart. It's like potato chips. And this manhole, I could not get the angle right to show you what's going on here, but the entire road surface here is depressed enough that if a small, modern vehicle was to drive over that, anything smaller, you know, like Volkswagen or something like that, they'll bottom out on that manhole. I fear it every time I go over it, and I drive a big truck, okay? So that, to me, is an extremely hazardous and bad situation. Rolling Hills Road. Go ahead. Next, good example of a narrow roadway. Every time our service trucks, personal vehicles are going down this road, it's too narrow for two vehicles to safely pass one another. Not to mention, it is a long, straight road, so they have a tendency to go a few miles an hour over the speed limit. But because of that road surface right here, it was actually a surface on top of a pre-existing surface, and it is unraveling and separating. And again, the garbage trucks, they pull in, they pick up the trash, they're doing this, tearing up the edges of the road, turning around. Go ahead. Some more examples. The same road. Keep going. All right. Maple Street and Palm. This is at the exit of our city beach. Go ahead. Over here to the side is a storm drain that was actually lost or forgotten. We've since been able to clean it out, figure it out where the water's supposed to be going, and stop the pooling right here. But this entire section, if I was to go out there with a shovel, you could literally pick chunks of that up with a shovel. It's no longer bonded. All the side roads down the Granada, Maple, Myrtle, Magnolia, that's what you're seeing here. Oakwood. Oakwood, I think we have David Paul in the room tonight, yes. David and I have become very good friends over the years, and I don't want him to hear this, but I'm putting in for a new phone number.
I'll give it to you, David.
David Paul lives down at the end of this road, and brought it to my attention when I first came to work here two years ago, how bad this road is. This top portion still remains the way it is today. If you'll go to the next photo. Looking down the hill, this is where the trash was getting picked up. The garbage truck would back down. This is a rather steep hill, and when they'd try to get traction to go back up the hill, it was literally just digging the road out. Go ahead. Next photo. And that's just a close view where there's absolutely nothing left of that road, period. Go ahead. And a view of how steep it is going up the hill. That's my truck at the top. Okay? Since then, we have done a repair on that steep slope right here, and according to the two residents, it's still holding up. Fair enough. While we find the funding and the opportunity to get their road resurfaced. Years ago, that one was on this report here, for somewhere in the excess of about $30,000 to repave. And now we're looking at closer to $90,000 cost of material and project. Okay? Next photo. Magnolia and Palmetto. These are all the side roads coming down off of Palmetto. You can see how the heavier trucks are crushing the edges of the roadway. There are storm drains in here that are no longer open or flowing and functioning properly. We have done some, if not as many as we could this past year, but still not adequate enough. Go ahead. You can keep going through these fairly quickly. I'll stop you if there's something important. All the same condition. Intersections, roads unraveling. Okay? Again, big trucks cutting the corners. Right? Go ahead. And we have Blue Cove Drive. As you go into Blue Cove, this first road to the left, you'll see this road condition here. It's an old gravel and tar-type road that they had resurfaced with asphalt on top of it. Take... Go to the next photo, please. And you can see the remnants of the asphalt where this is backed down to the old gravel and tar. Now, believe it or not, that road is in fairly good condition, but it's not going to stay that way forever. And one thing I've noticed is that further up the hill, right here in front of the church, from there on, two different segments of that road have been resurfaced. Why they didn't just do the entire road at one time, I'm not sure. But these are some of the things that we're trying to eliminate as we go through our master road program and reconditioning roads. Go ahead. And you'll see the next three are going to be the intersections there in Blue Cove, this stuff right here. Yeah, go to the next one. Go to the next one. There you go. All right, that's a good example. These intersections are good examples of the difference between capital improvement funds and repair funds. If all we were to do is come in and cut out a square, put down some hot patch, smooth it out, make it look better, that is a repair. But we did find out that these three intersections, to do a reasonable repair, was going to cost us, I think, around $11,000 from one contractor. I had another contractor tell me he wouldn't do it for less than $15,000, because he didn't even want to put his name on the project. No guarantee that repairs are going to hold up. So we've done the best we can to repair for as minimal as possible. However, in the next year and a half or so, we are going to have to look at these intersections before we lose them. Okay? Go ahead. This is down by our shop, across the street from Councilwoman Williams. Now, since then... Go ahead. Since this... Go ahead. One more. We have actually came in and did a $600 repair in this area here, and it is holding up fairly well. We probably will get an extra year or two out of it, but it's not going to last forever. Okay? Here's a good example. Now, we are getting into the photos of Ohio Street. That's the street that's right behind us here at City Hall. It goes from this curve, straight across the city, parallel with Williams Street. This manhole is right here behind City Hall. That's where the city employees are parking in City Hall parking lot. You can see the height difference in that manhole. You hit that with a motorcycle or a low-hanging vehicle, and you're going to know it. So as a result of it, people are cutting off the edges. Go ahead. You can see how they're avoiding the manhole by cutting the corner tight. We've also figured out that this road is extremely narrow, especially around that curve, where two vehicles coming in opposite directions don't have enough room to pass at the same time. Go ahead. All right. Looking north, from behind City Hall here, you'll see where I parked a city truck, and you can see the evidence of where everybody's parking their boats or trailers or personal vehicles, even during council meeting attendance and stuff, and what it does to the edge of the roadway over time. Okay? So when we look to... And this is behind Gruff, same example. All right? Delivery trucks are coming in, and if they stay in the road, they block it off completely, so they've gotten in the habit of pulling here, plus their employees park back here. So as we repave some of our roads in the city, we can eliminate an additional problem of parking issues. When we find the opportunity to increase by two or three on-street parkings every other road, or here or there, it certainly helps out in the long run. All right, go ahead. Again, going up roads where the two doctor's offices are, left and right. The doctor office on the right had theirs paved up to the sidewalk, but this doctor's office has not, and therefore, getting tore up and impacting our storm drains along that roadway. Go ahead. I just had to turn around and take another picture of that intersection there. Like every intersection in the city, they're all unraveling, coming apart. Annie Johnson, we're very familiar with that. Also, this is their main driveway to the rear of their building for deliveries and stuff, but customers and delivery trucks are parking right here on the side of the city driveway. And you can see, the roads don't last when that begins. Go ahead. That's looking back towards Pennsylvania Avenue, just to show you the integrity of the intersections there again. Go ahead. And keep going. Now, the next few shots are moving down. This is where the police department is slated to be. This section of road, I think, is the best section on that entire stretch of Ohio, but literally, right here at the intersection, it's coming apart. So go ahead. All right. You can see where the water funnel is. That's the start of a pothole. And right where the new pavement was done on Park Avenue, the old road is unraveling right beside the new work that's been done. Go ahead. There you go. All right, go ahead. And then, on this side of the road, you can see again where people are utilizing the side of the road for private parking. They have access to their own driveways, or the driveways aren't big enough, so they're all parking alongside the edge of the road. All right? And again, at one point, the city resurfaced this side of the road, did not do this side of the road. So this side of the road right here is completely down to lime rock. It looks like there's asphalt there, but when you get there, it's about a half-inch thick, and you can see the lime rock under it. So, okay? Some of our secondary factors is a road or an area selected for restoration. The effect should be made... Effort should be made to ensure that other utility service providers are included in the determination and timing. This couldn't be any more true, and proven itself, as we began with our parking lot projects. Okay? We looked at photos of the Granada, and I get questioned every day, why are we not repaving the Granada? I spoke with the water department, and they have a very old antiquated water line and sewer lines that run along that section of the Granada. If we were to attempt to pave over it, there is no guarantee that within six months, a year, or two years, they wouldn't go in there and cut a strike, put in a new water line, and put a patch job in the middle of our brand-new road. Once we spend the money on the roads, we do not get that money back. FGUA doesn't buy that road from us, do their work, and then give us our money. Okay? So timing is everything with our utilities. I've checked with them about Ohio Street and Cedar Street on this side of town. I will be coming to council next month with the estimates from the engineers to get moving forward on at least getting those two main corridors and heavy traffic areas done. FGUA and other utilities have not spoke up about any needs or anything that would hold us up, or hurt the integrity, long-term integrity of those projects. Okay? But the Granada is certainly next in line. As soon as... And FGUA has promised me they've put it on their radar for next year's budget to have that water line replaced. Okay? Okay. We consult with our engineers, which is always recommended, to ensure that the new standards and designs and requirements are met. What we're also finding out with our stormwater is, we can no longer just go put a swale in and call it done. You know, our DRAs have to accommodate. We have to pre-filter the water before it goes to the river. We all know this. We've been beating a dead horse for the last two years I've been here about protecting the river. So that's why we bring our engineers in on it. And trust me, Alan will reel me back when I say, can't we do it cheaper? Can we find a better way of doing it? We have certain standards to meet. "The cost and benefit analysis must be conducted to determine the feasibility based on the funding availability." And that's where I'm going to talk about my good buddy, David Paul, again. We know how bad his road is, and we all know that I'm working towards getting his road done, preferably with a grant, okay? Or if I get a grant that'd take care of an entire neighborhood, such as Donellen Heights, I can refocus some of my dwindling road money to get his road done. And not to be harsh about it, but the fact is, it services two driveways. So $90,000 to service two driveways, but it is a city road, a city responsibility, and cannot, will not be ignored. Okay? But those are types of things that we look into when we are realizing we have limited funds, limited resources. Where to use our money the best. Okay? And funding resources based on the type and the scope of the work needed. Again, we have had Alan and Kimberly Horn looking into grants. CDBG grants, we know, are fairly easy to come across, but they're very restrictive. They only do certain types of work. There are stormwater grants, but they will only deal with the stormwater components. There's technical grants to help with the engineers who come in and do our survey of the roads and give us determinations. Those type of grants, we can apply for. All right? So... Okay. Where does the city need to go from here? We had talked about this back in August. Applying for the DEO grant, which will allow us... I think that is the Technical Assistance Grant, the DEO grant. That will allow us some funding to put towards the engineers to come in and update our road assessment, road evaluation forms, and get us on track with what is a priority. Now, with that said, I already know, and the citizens know, and everybody knows, that our main priorities are our most heavily-trafficed roads and our bypass roads, our alternate roads. And that would be the Granada and Ohio Street. The Granada runs parallel to Pennsylvania Avenue. Ohio Street runs parallel to Williams. And with all the new Publix and all the shopping centers and everything down there, I could sit out here all day long and watch thousands of cars going down Ohio Street. And I've been watching semi-trucks come in off of the highway down Daisman, which is crossing over Ohio Street, just to avoid Pennsylvania. Okay? The Granada, that is another alternative route. And I'll tell you that for a fact, because I do it every single day. Try to take a left-hand turn when you pull out of Public Works Street there, Bostick Street, and you can't do it. You might get a little break in the traffic to turn right, so I turn right, and then I turn immediately left at the Chamber, and I go straight up the Granada when I've got to go out to the wastewater treatment plant, or Donellen Heights, or anything on that side of town. Okay? So... But, all right. Use the SWIFTMUD grant results. You know, I gave a report last month. We are in the process of the SWIFTMUD grant with the engineers, going over the assets and the conditions of our stormwater components, and we will be able to use this information to move forward with getting grants that would help upgrade our stormwater issues, i.e., maybe paving roads as a result of having to put new covert pipes in. So if I go down, say, Palmetto Way, because I've got $200,000 this year, if I go down there and I pave Palmetto Way, but then when this result comes in and we determine, well, now we need all new covert pipes and stormwater components down there, again, you spend that money, we don't get it back. So trying to coordinate time, okay? And to create, our final thing should be to create a consistent policy of criteria of the roads must meet prior to it beginning budget improvements and stuff. What we need to do is come up with a consistent policy. By getting the road assessments redone, the evaluation of the roads redone, setting a priority, having the council approve the priority of which roads need to be targeted, starting this year and moving forward, then I think we can set a long-term master road plan that every year we can apply for more grants. Every year, we can look at funding alternatives and stuff. And when we have big developers coming in to certain neighborhoods, maybe working with them to ensure that the integrity of the roads are restored to their original condition when construction begins. Those type things. Okay? I know I breezed through that quite a bit. I skipped over a lot of things, only because there's some... I'm not going to go into details over every single type of grant that's out there. We can get into that as we move forward with setting a funding policy. Okay? Is there any questions from the council at this time? Yes, ma'am?
Actually, this is for Theresa. I know you took a picture of the road out there where the new Baptist church is going to be going. When we do things like that, and I know that's where the pumpkin patch goes a lot as well. Like, when I went to France, and we went to go to Monet, there's a little country road that, I don't know how they got it fussed up, but one of the problems was that these tourist companies weren't giving any funds to fix these roads, like what we're discussing. So I didn't know... And again, you know, I want everybody to profit and make money and all those kind of great things. However, if they are contributing to road deteriorations, and with the Baptist church, we know darn well that the little road is going to be widened. Are they going to be... Is that going to be part of their development plan, or...
It could be. There are requirements in the Land Development Code that may drive them to include certain road improvements... road improvements, entries, entryways, driveways, and it'll affect Rolling Hills Road at that portion of it.
Right.
So, there is something when we're looking at the site plan.
I see, like, turn lanes because of, you know?
All of that will have to be looked at and developed, and when their engineers design that site plan, they're going to take all of that into consideration in fine detail.
Well, they have to do, and I'm connecting it back to you, but will they have to do a traffic study? Because like, I know when I come back out on Sunday?
I believe the traffic study is required in that respect, yes.
Because I mean, it's just, so that, Troy, is something that I would think then you would need to connect Troy with them, so they could all kind of maybe come?
Right. He's actually a part of the application approval process.
Aren't you?
The preliminary, as staff goes through its review of the application, there's checkpoints and the departments, and we even have the allowance in there to send it over to the engineer to look at for those exact reasons.
Okay. And it's that way, we know that they're going to do X, maybe that, I'm not taking your $90,000 away from you, but maybe, you know, if you know you have another $100,000 that we can do something to fix the rest of the road, like I said, not patch it all together, but if we know that that's coming, like with the Granada, you know that there's probably some pipes going to be fixed, and we can kind of coordinate. That's just what I was kind of thinking, not loud. And there's another, oh, just as a side note, you know, there's an alligator in the DRA behind Bank of America?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Hilton.
The one behind Bank of America?
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
The state, the state DRA?
Yeah.
Yeah, that big one?
There was a small one that I saw yesterday.
It has regular visitors.
Okay. I just saw it. Very cool.
That has an overflow pipe that actually goes to the lake in Blue Coat.
Doesn't that dump out right there at Bostick Street by that Williams woman's house or something?
Yeah.
Any other questions for Troy? Other question? Just a comment I have for you, Troy, is I've been talking a lot with you on this issue, kind of getting up to speed to it. It's something that's very important. And I think the challenge for the city, and really, big challenge for you, is we know we have a limited amount of money. But yet, there's hardly an area within the city that does not need some sort of road repair.
Absolutely.
From top to bottom. So the challenge is going to be, with a limited amount of money, with the amount of needs that are out there for the roads, making a decision, what comes first? You know? And certainly, wherever you live or whatever, that would be what you would hope the council would focus on, you know? I think we're going to have to make some tough decisions, where to spend the money. I think we'd probably focus on the areas that benefit the most people, you know, highly trafficked, the people, in other words, if you're going to spend money, get the mostest to the mostest.
Right.
Right? And I think, no matter what we decide, there's going to be people that are going to be very happy with those decisions, and there's going to be people that are going to say, well, why am I coming next year or two years from now? And I think a point you really made out, made really well, is that this is 10 years of...
Longer.
Yeah. It hasn't been taken care of for, I think, justifiable reasons. So now the challenge is, we're not only having to repair what's currently going bad as we speak. If it rains today, there's going to be another pothole or two show up somewhere, right? So the challenge is not only dealing with what's already out there that needs to be repaired, but what's currently going on. And I think your point is, I think this is going to be a non-stop project for the city. I think there's going to be roadwork going on, nonstop, for years, just doing it as we can, as the money comes in.
I want to have this project, I want the city completely repaved within the next 15 years, because I already have a retirement date in mind, and I want it done before I leave here, so I don't have to extend my retirement.
And I thought your point was really cool, that if we go through it over a 20-year period, the roads are 15 years, the roads that we're repairing now, 15 years from now, will again need to be repaired. So this is just going to be an unending challenge.
Exactly. But the good thing is, is once, see, our major challenge in some of these old roads that are, that have been neglected, is the fact that now the sub-bases are deteriorating, and the fact that the stormwater components are 50 years, 100 years outdated. But once we start restoring these roads and reconditioning them, then every 15 years we can reevaluate them. We can do better repair, better maintenance on them, and get 50 years out of these roads, as opposed to just build it now and forget about it until it goes back to being a dirt road. Okay? But with that, council, I just want to point out that I have asked Alan to provide me with a quote for his services to do the engineering on Ohio Street and Cedar Street, and to come back to us with a estimated cost for that project, so we can see what fits in the budget. In addition to that, I've also brought him out to St. Patrick's Street, or St. Patrick's Road there by the baseball field. And I've asked that he provide us with an estimate for his services to do the engineering for just St. Patrick's. That will give us a ballpark figure, no pun intended, of what these roads are going to cost us in the Donellen Heights area. But the one thing I want to make sure that the council understands and the citizens is that I am not promising to pave that road, but if it comes back, that it is a feasible thing for us to do as we're getting grants. And we'll learn more about this when the grant presentation comes up. But that's not money we're going to lose. That could be counted as our city's contribution to that grant, more or less, and I won't get into details. But, so, Alan's going to be working up the cost to do the engineering for those three roads. I'm pretty confident that if we have that ready for council's approval and review in April, that by June or July, we could be resurfacing the two roads here in the historic district of Ohio Street and Cedar Street, which is, by the way, just under a half a mile. It's .47 of a mile. So, based on our estimates, it was what?
900.
Almost a million dollars a mile for new roads, a half a million dollars per mile for old roads, but the cost has gone up. So, I'm going to put it on Alan's challenge there to come back with about a $380,000 to a $390,000 figure for these two roads. All right? But at the same time, when we get the conceptuals back from the engineers on this, I want the council to take into consideration, I have requested that he account for some on-street parking in the areas where we see that people are naturally already parking. Somebody said it best the other day, that they don't put sidewalks in universities until after the first year, and they see where the kids have walked. Right? And I spoke up, said that about our roads here in the city. Now we know where the easy parking is available, and where the violations are happening, people just parking in the dirt, we might as well pay them. Okay? So, is there any further comments?
One last question I have. So, you're looking at it as possibly two separate projects, if financially feasible, Ohio Street and Cedar Street to be engineered, a cost engineering, and then also to take a look at St. Patrick's and see, have that engineered and see what that costs. So, when you're going to come back to us, we'll have two roads and one road, all three roads evaluated for engineering?
Yes.
Right? Because I would say, if you really said to me, out of all the roads, people have approached me as a councilman over the last couple of years, that they're most concerned about, I mean, the one I hear over and over and over, St. Patrick's Street by a long, by a mile, you know, people, there's something about St. Patrick's Street that really has people, maybe it's going back and forth to the ball field or whatever, that seems to be really near and dear to everybody.
Yes.
Am I losing people more time?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. Troy, just because that is going out to the baseball field, I just had this thought. I don't know if there's a grant out there that would do something with?
Yes. So listen, this is why...
I'm trying to speak, Valerie, because I couldn't figure the rest of this.
This is why I went ahead and asked Alan to look into this for us. There's always an opportunity of things coming down the pipe.
Right.
And if we're not prepared for these opportunities, we could miss open windows. Right? So, we have the solar farm going out there.
Possibly.
And I don't know what contracts or what agreements anybody has with anything, but if there's a possibility that they may contribute to upgrading that road while they're constructing the solar farm, I want to be prepared with knowing the cost and knowing that we have engineering done.
Right.
Right?
And plus, with it being a playground, it's not a playground, it's a...
Sports complex.
Thank you. You know, there's got to be something, the Youth of America Foundation grant, I don't know.
There's always an opportunity for something. But right now, I know the solar farm's coming, it's going to get here quicker than I can stay ahead of it. I want to have some engineering available for the probability that maybe they'll be able to help us out, you know? Or, at least we'll have something to go to the table with if they give us that chance. Right? But who's to say? I personally would probably put $100 on the project, just to say, you know what, next year, my grandson's going to start playing out there, and the next year after that, my granddaughter's going to be out there, and I'm going to be a commuting parent or grandparent to that ball field every weekend. Now, and it is a road that is dear and near to my heart, because if you've ever driven a fire truck at about 40 miles an hour down that road, and then had to turn around and pick up 2,400 feet of hose and reload it, you'd want that road paved. So, and that's happened, honestly, it's happened. So, listen, that's the reason I'm looking at the St. Patrick's, just to be prepared. And when we go for grants, that gives us a base foundation of what that entire development makes.
I still have dirt in my car, and I haven't had my car in 20 years on that baseball drive.
Sure.
I just wish that there was some way we can keep these heavy trucks off our street. I get tired of looking at our L. carriers on Bostick Street. These are heavy trucks, and I know they're wearing the streets out.
Can't we put up a sign?
It's terrible.
Not really.
No wait, we can't do a no wait thing?
Because, you know, Bostick Street, again, is one of our bypass roads. When that railroad track goes down, guess what? Garbage trucks?
Yeah.
Delivery trucks?
That's hot.
I mean, I think, I think they shut it down on UPS's busiest day, and they were tractor-trailer UPS, not your delivery UPS trucks.
There was some traffic.
You're right. But if we get down there, and we know that that's the situation, we will upgrade that intersection to accommodate it the best we can.
All right, thank you.
I think Councilman Williams sets an excellent point. As traffic continues to increase, and I don't, I think everybody in the room would agree on that point, traffic is increasing.
It's crazy.
When you're backed up at stoplights and it's difficult to turn, we're going to find, people are going to start using the side streets to avoid lights. And like you pointed out, it doesn't necessarily mean cars, it can start meaning vehicles and whatever, that they know the roads and, you know, they figured it out. So suddenly, you're going to have big vehicles going down side streets. So, Chief, that's probably something in the future we're all going to have to talk about, you know, whatever that is.
That's heavily regulated to stop big vehicles going down these streets. Also, the big companies, so we probably pay more of the taxes than these cars do, and we have just as much light to the road as anybody else. I've gone through this, so it's going to be hard to regulate. This truck here, who's going to wait?
Yeah.
It's something to look at. One thing, I am starting to get a little knowledge on roads, and I do realize that the state roads and the county roads that have the big vehicles, they have a different weight-carrying capacity than a residential road. So if we're putting in our money to repair residential roads, and these big commercial vehicles are now coming in and using those roads, which exceed the capacity of the roads to carry, you know, that's something, we at least, we at least need to talk about that.
And that's one of the topics I brought up about preparing these roadways for modern-day vehicles, the delivery trucks, the garbage trucks specifically. A lot of the intersections down Palmetto Way are very narrow, tight corners, and the garbage trucks are the ones tearing those corners up, and UPS trucks. If we extend it to our city driveway, widen those intersections, harden those intersections, we'll get 20 additional years out of them.
Counsel, any additional comments?
Any comments or questions for our engineer, why I haven't here, so maybe you guys have some input or need some advice?
Well, what I like is that his work can be completed in a timely fashion, and we might be able to address it within the next 30 days. Correct?
I don't want to speak up on that without his nodding and approving of a yes. Okay?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Okay, we've completed our business. Before we make a motion to adjourn, I would like to just make a statement. Statement is in reference to Chief McQuay. With the resolution we passed, we have now passed it, we're now, Mandy has assumed the responsibilities, many of the responsibilities that the city administrator had. With that, the expanded duties of the chief now, chief is now the chief of police. With that said, I just want to, for those that didn't hear what I said before, when the elections were completed in November, and the city, the new city council took its seat 30 days later, we walked into this building with a, basically, a new council, with a, the dynamics are totally changed, you have a different mayor, you have two new council members. You have the city administrator, who has resigned before the council even sits here. And we have multiple absences going on in the office with various things, whether it was injuries or whatever. We did not have, for a period of time, when this council took over, a city administrator in the building, a receptionist. Jan was working from home, and it was very difficult, so our financial operations were pushed to the limits. And who was the fourth one, chief? There was another one?
Community development.
Community development. So our community development, Lonnie, resigned. So you can imagine what this council is looking at. The delegation to run the city was given to the city administrator. Council on its own doesn't have, it gave its authority away. So there is basically a ship with no captain, and there's no individual council member that has the authority to give directives to anybody. When this meeting's over, I can go up to anybody here. I, I don't have the authority to tell people what to do. Council has the authority. So what we had, we came off of a bruising election. Those that have been in the city for a long time would admit this is one of the more bruising elections that they recall. And the emotions were high. People were upset, some people were happy, some people were upset, but the emotions were very high. Chief McQuay, without being asked, volunteered to step up into this hornet's nest. Understandably, walking into this position right off of an election, right off an election, you're going to have people that are appreciative of that, you're going to have people that are skeptical of that. Why is chief doing it? Why is he doing this? Chief has done this and has asked for nothing, as he continues to be the police chief and continues to try to do what's best for the police. I will say this to you, that chief and I, from time to time, we have disagreed on specific items, but I will tell you, over the last three months, chief has been indispensable on reconnecting the dots with the city. Whether you like it or not, I will tell you, if chief didn't step up and do what he did, there was nobody, nobody there to run this city. And you had a staff that was stretched to the max, that was a little confused about the election, not knowing what it all meant and where it was going, and we needed a stabilizing force. And we needed a stabilizing force to come in here. Now, whether you agree or disagree with some of the things that chief has tried to do, I can tell you, the things that he has done makes a difference. I would, I was looking at it as mayor with the situation, going from councilman to mayor, where now you feel a little bit more of answerability to things. And I'm looking at this building devoid of people, and no one having the decision power to go forward, to do anything. I says, "Wow, I thought this election itself was tough, but it sounds like the fun has just begun." So, chief, you know, with the resolution that was passed tonight, Mandy has now assumed those responsibilities. And I want to thank you very, very much for everything you've done, and I've really enjoyed working, working with you.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So I moved.
Second?
A second?
Please out.
Thank you very much, folks. Thank you.